Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of November 4th, 2019. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus?
Present.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Lanson, absent. Commissioner Newman, absent. Chair McMahon.
Thank you. Here. Okay. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
None this evening, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, it is a time for public comment. Any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must complete a speaker card and file it with the Recording Secretary before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. The speaker's remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the Commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. The monitor in front of you will show you the remaining time you have. At this time, I have no public speaker cards, so we can move on. Item number six, the consent calendar. We have the minutes of September 23rd, 2019. Do any of my fellow Commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the minutes for the meeting on September 23rd.
Thank you. Will you, will the Secretary please prepare us for a vote?
I'm having technical difficulties, but yes, approve.
You're on the board now.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Item number seven, public hearings. Would the Clerk please open the public hearing for seven A?
Item seven A, hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A Oak Tree Permit Number OTP 2019-70313 to allow removal of one Valley Oak Quercus lobata tree approximately forty inch trunk diameter, causing structural damage to a single-family dwelling located at 2656 Great Smoky Court. The applicant is Diane R. Anderson.
Thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff is Associate Planner Wilchua.
Good evening, Chair McMahon, members of the Commission. For your consideration tonight is, as mentioned, a request to remove one mature Valley oak that's causing structural damage on existing single-family dwelling. This is an aerial photo showing the project location. To the west side of the property is the North Ranch Mall, and to the south of that, just out of that, is Thousand Oaks Boulevard where the arrow is. To the north is Hillcrest, and to the east is Westlake Boulevard. The request is going before the Planning Commission because the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code requires that, requires Planning Commission approval for any removal of an oak tree that exceeds twenty-four inches in diameter above, measured at four and a half feet above the natural grade. According to the municipal code, um, wait. We missed, I'm sorry, I apologize. As a matter of background, the project site is a six thousand nine hundred sixty-nine square foot in area, and it's zoned RE1. It was a single-family dwelling that was built in 1969 near the subject oak tree. The oak tree was twenty inches in diam, was estimated to be at twenty inches in diameter at the time. The tree has grown to forty inches in diameter over the fifty years. That's double the original size of the tree. The tree is now causing damage to the home. It's interfering with the integrity of the foundation, and the trunk is just inches away from the structure. The applicant filed this oak tree permit application in April for the removal of the tree. According to the municipal code, an oak tree permit may be granted based on certain findings. Some of, some of those findings include if the tree is causing, or is likely to cause substantial property damage, and the said, the said damage cannot be remedied or controlled. Approving such requests will not be contrary with the general purpose and intent of the oak trees, of the city's oak tree preservation and protection guidelines. In this case, the removal is, this tree is necessary to preserve or protect life and property. As for the condition of the oak tree, as mentioned earlier, it has grown to a forty foot, it has a forty-foot crown. The trunk is just inches away from the, from the existing dwelling. The applicant has cut a notch on the house roof to accommodate the growth of the tree over the years. It has a buttress root that's growing underneath the foundation, which you will see in the picture, in the, picture in the next slides. The trunk, the main trunk of the tree is blocking the windows, limiting light, ventilation, and egress. The tree, at this point, has become a nuisance and a safety hazard to the structure and its residents. This is a picture of the tree overall. The tree was about twenty inches in diameter when it was built fifty years ago, and like I said, it was bench, it, it has grown twice that size now. It extends forty feet in all direction. The roof of the house has been notched, and if you can follow the arrow on the screen, has been notched around the tree to accommodate the, the growth of the tree, which is now again touching the roof, which we, you will see in the next slide. The tree's trunk is now large and heavy that the potential, they have the potential to break and fall over the existing residence. This is a picture of the tree trunk, a close-up picture of the trunk, almost touching the roof again, which needs to be notched again if the tree is not removed. This shows a picture of the buttress of the tree that is growing towards the structure. And this is the main trunk of the tree, which is blocking the window, limiting ventilation and egress. The city's consultant has evaluated the tree, and he, and made a determination that branch failure may, may likely to occur within the next three years. Trunk movement during high wind conditions will cause damage to the residence, to the window, and the roof, and eventually the wall of the house. The anticipated improved rainfall will cause faster growth for the tree, where the root expansion will raise and, and will raise the slab and crack the foundation. As for the environmental review for this request, this is exempt under Class IV exemption under CEQA, which, which pertains to minor alteration to land, including tree removal. As for the conclusion for this project, staff finds that there's not a reasonable action that can be taken to prove, to prevent the tree from causing damage to the structure. The applicant has provided proof and documentation that the tree is causing and will cause, and will continue to cause damage to the residence. Staff concurs that removal of the tree will not be in conflict with the intent of the tree ordinance as explained in the staff report. The tree has grown to a point, and unfortunately, there's no reasonable remedies to prevent it from causing further damage to the residence and causing hazard to the residence. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving OTP 2013 dash, 2019 dash seven zero three one three, based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the attached resolution to the staff report. Staff is available to answer the Commission's question.
Are there any questions of Commissioners? Do you have any questions?
I just have one question that may be entirely off-base, but I was just curious. How close were you allowed to build a house next to a tree in 1969? I was just curious.
At that point, I don't know. I guess they are allowed to build it at that distance.
Thank you.
Well, if I may, our first oak tree ordinance was actually adopted in 1970, so it was a little bit after this, these homes were built. So, they were trying to retain the trees back then. There was no distance required from the, from the trunk of the tree at that time.
Copy that. Yeah, I just, from personal experience, that house was built in 61, and I had a couple of trees extraordinarily close as well, so I was like, this must be a thing.
Okay. No more questions. At this point, we will ask the applicant to come and speak. You have fifteen minutes if you'd like to speak. And as the applicant is coming up, I, for the record, I will just state that I went out today to see the tree for myself, and the applicant was outside, and we had a short conversation. Can you please state your name and city of residence for the record?
Diane Anderson. And I'd like to remove the oak tree to save the house, and I thank you for coming out to see it. It made me feel good, because you cared about the oak tree. And I just wanted to say, just as you said, apparently, that tree was there when the plans were put in front of the city, and the city approved the house. They could have put any other house there, and it would have sat back farther, and everybody would have been happy, but they didn't, and I've got what I've got. Let's see. I know it happened before. You had a voice in these matters, and before we bought the house, and there is no going back, but we need to move forward, and to that, both you and I need to deal with the problem that I have. I'm a senior citizen who is a widow. I've lived, yeah, get through this. I've lived in the house since 1977. I've paid taxes and supported this community. I am also an employee of the City of Thousand Oaks as a crossing guard, and I need to keep the value of the house up. I would appreciate any and all help you can give me support-wise and financially, and I'd like to thank my neighbor for coming with me, and I'd like to thank the committee for listening and for being concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Just have one. So, you've lived there since 1977?
We moved in in 1977. According to the documents I had, that that house was built in 1970.
Correct. Okay. And my, my only question to you is, so the time that you've lived with the tree, it's been a solid forty years or so?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
For the last forty years or so, you've lived with this tree. Have you ever considered removing it before, or is it just that, that it's come to a point where you can't no longer?
Have I ever considered pardon?
Did you ever talk about removing this tree before, or was it ever been an issue before?
No, because we love the tree. I mean, there's animals that live up there. There's history to that tree and everything, and, I mean, my family and I just loved it. But now, you know, it's, it's loving me, but it's damaging, and so one of us has to give, and I want to give the house to my sons when I pass away, so, you know, I guess the tree, I'll have to go. We never pruned it. We let Mother Nature prune it.
Okay.
So, the only thing we did was to cut the roof, move beams, move supports to accommodate the tree, but now I can't cut anything more.
So, you've been good neighbors for forty-something years, and?
Forty-two years.
You got, thank you.
Love this area, love it. So, thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any public speaker cards. We will go to public comments. You will need to fill out a speaker card if you would like to say something about the project under consideration. Each speaker card will have five minutes. However, we don't have any, so, I don't know. Here we go. So, I do have a written statement card, and that's in favor of approving this application. And we can go back to staff for follow-up comments?
No further comment, Chair.
Okay. At this point, if you want, there, you have a rebuttal, if you want to say anything more? No, the applicant. At this point, according to the way we do business, you have the opportunity to speak one more time before we vote. Did you have any more? Did you want to speak anymore? Okay. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and I will open up the floor for a motion or discussion.
Yes. Thank you, Diane. Appreciate you coming here and expressing your concern with oak tree, and thank you for being a good neighbor for forty years with oak tree. I agree. I think it's been a time now that the tree has caused damage to the home and will continue to cause damage, so I recommend adopting the resolution to approve Oak Tree Permit 2019 dash seven zero three one three, based on the finding and subject to the conditions included.
Commissioner Bus, did you have something to say?
The only thing I have to say is, I went out and looked at the property as well, and I marveled at the fact that they were able to live with this tree for as long as they did, as close as it was to their property. I don't take, taking down an oak tree lightly, but I think in this situation, it is warranted.
I also agree, the amount of care you took of it, and the amount of cutting of your roof and removing, piping your gutter, and everything you did to, to keep it happy for so long, I, I'm not sure that many people would have done that, and I, I appreciate your efforts very much, but I think it's, it's time. So, if there's nothing else, we do have a late speaker card? Okay. Do I need to reopen the meeting? Okay. You know what? I think that the meeting is closed, and I think we're going to proceed with the vote. I think, Mr. Commissioner, did you push the motion button?
Sorry, I'm not getting any buttons to... Yeah, I can go ahead and verbally confirm motion.
Okay.
So... Yeah. Usually I get a message. Yes, yeah. Maybe closing, opening it again.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. All right. There is an appeal period. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within ten days.
There we go. Now I'm getting the, the buttons here. Yeah. I, I closed out and?
Are we pausing for technical? Okay. At that, at this point, can we open the public meeting for seven B, please?
Item seven B, hearing having been advertised as required by law, is hereby open to consider Agenda Item seven B, precise plan of design number PPD 2019 dash seven zero four two two, administrative action number AA 2019 dash seven zero eight two two, oak tree permit number OTP 2019 dash seven zero four two seven, and underground utility waiver number UUW 2019 dash seven oh four two five, to allow encroachment into natural terrain greater than twenty-five percent gradient, including encroachment within the protected zones of eight oak trees, removal of one oak tree, and waiver of the requirement to underground existing overhead utilities, to accommodate construction of one, a one-story, single-family dwelling, a detached accessory dwelling unit, and a detached garage slash workshop in excess of six hundred square feet located at 2670 West Kelly Road, and the applicants are Jeffrey and Robin Jacobson.
Thank you. And the staff presenting, well, I'm sorry, on the, presenting on behalf of staff is Associate Planner Carlos Contreras.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is a request to construct a single-family residence, a administrative action, and an oak tree permit and underground utility waiver at a property located at 2670 West Kelly Road. The proposed project will allow for grading with a natural sloping terrain exceeding twenty-five percent, waive the underground, undergrounding of utilities, and will involve the construction of a one-story, single-family dwelling, a detached accessory dwelling unit, to be referred to as an ADU, and a detached garage and workshop. With regards to the Planning Commission review before you tonight, encroachment into slopes over twenty-five percent require review by the Planning Commission. The municipal code standards, goals, policies associated with grading are intended to minimize grain activities in these hillside areas to avoid substantial alterations to the terrain, impacts to sensitive landforms, and reduce visual impacts, and avoid excessive manufactured slopes, which is why the project is before you here tonight for a review of such requirements. Here is a vicinity map of the project site. It's located approximately two thousand feet south of the 101 freeway, about two hundred feet south of Borchard Road, about a thousand feet north of Lynn Road, and to the west, you have Wendy Drive. With regards to the project site itself, here you have the aerial photograph of the subject site. The property is zoned RE, one acre, rural exclusive. The parcels, three point seven acres in area. Of that total area, sixty-three percent have slopes over twenty-five percent gradient. The single-family dwelling will be situated between two knolls. I will point to them here on the site aerial. There's one knoll here to the east, and there's another knoll here to the west. The house will be located approximately in the central portion of the property. There are seventeen oak trees on, on the subject property, and of those seventeen, eight will be encroached upon, and one will be removed as a proposal tonight. As this aerial photograph demonstrates, you do have an existing residential community up on the northeastern portion of the area, a single-family homes, and then immediately to the west of that, you have apartment buildings, and then you have the religious assembly uses to the west of that, just along Borchard Road. And then that transitions over to the south, where you have the existing Kelly Estate community, low-density residential, single-family homes, and this particular site is the last remaining lot to be developed in that community. Here's a, an exhibit demonstrating the site topography to give you a better understanding of the subject site. Along Borchard Road there, at the toe of the slope, you have, again, the Islamic Center, some apartments to the west of that, and to the east of that, you also have some apartments. The, the slope ascends towards the subject property, and in red there is where the proposed residence would be located, and as previously mentioned, you do, excuse me, as previously mentioned, you do have the, the slope right here to the east, and another slope here to the, to the west of the proposed residence. With regards to the project details, the proposed main residence totals three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight square feet. It will include a three-car garage. It will include a eight hundred ninety-seven square foot detached garage workshop, six hundred square foot detached ADU, and other associated development includes grading, utilities, hardscape, and landscaping. Here's a photograph of the subject property. On the left, you're looking north as you enter the property. You have two oak trees there on the right-hand side. The photograph on the right here is looking north from the proposed building pad area. This is looking towards the 101 free, Borchard Road and the 101 freeway. As these photographs demonstrate, the site has been previously disturbed in the past, and appears to be due to human encroachment. Here's another photograph of the subject property looking west. As you can see, there's an existing two-story, single-family residence immediately west, where you have that steep slope. And then you have, on, on the east, you have another path to travel there that's been used throughout the years, and you also have that knoll to the east of the proposed residence pad. Another photograph here looking to the northwest, this is that path to travel as you go towards the northwestern portion of the property. This area is where the proposed accessory dwelling unit will be located. It's on the most northern west portion of the subject property. And look, and the photograph to the right is looking south from where the proposed building pad would be. If you look at, at the top of the photograph, you have an existing two-story residence. The area already developed with single-family homes, and significantly larger in height and in mass than the proposed one-story residence, and that's what you have in that community there. With regards to the site plan, here in the green, you have the proposed accessory dwelling unit, and you have in blue the proposed main residence, and in orange, we demonstrate the proposed detached garage and workshop. The proposed detached garage workshop along the front property would be twenty-three feet from the front property line, and then you have about a ninety-five-foot setback to the main residence there. The, the ADU has more than over a hundred and forty feet setback from the rear property line, just to give you an idea of the proposed improvements on the site. This, the shaded area in gray or dark black is the driveway access to the detached accessory garage and the main residence, and also the driveway access to the proposed detached ADU. With regards to encroachments on slopes over twenty-five percent, based on the project plan, approximately seventy thousand square feet will be graded to accommodate the building pads and driveway access, which equates to about forty-four percent of the entire site will be developed. As previously mentioned, sixty-three percent of the site involves slopes greater than twenty-five percent. Of that, sixty-three percent, only twenty-nine will be impacted, twenty-nine percent, and the subject property will remain fifty-six percent in its natural condition. The proposed project does include grading, approximately three thousand five hundred cubic yards of grading. There will be no import or export with the proposed of the project. It will be a balanced site, meaning that there will be some cut where the areas are near the main residence, and then be relocated on the subject property and fulfill and recompaction. On the right here, you have the slope analysis. The areas in purple are the areas that are steeper than twenty-five percent, and the areas in red are the areas that are less than twenty-five percent in, in slope. As you can see, the area where the detached garage workshop is located is relatively flat, and again, previously disturbed in the past. And then the driveway access to the main residence is also pretty, um, um, flat and grade, and then you have the proposed residence that has some grading to the west and to the east between the two knolls to accommodate the building pad for the main residence, and then that driveway, that driveway access that leads to the ADU relatively flat there. And then you have some grading that's to the, to the south of that to accommodate for the building pad for the ADU. Here's the exhibit for the oak trees on the subject property. As previously stated, there are seventeen oak trees on site. Of those seventeen oak trees, fifteen are coastline oak trees, one valley oak, and one scrub oak. Of the total trees, eight will be encroached upon, which here, as you can see in the exhibit, in the yellow, I demonstrate the driveway access. The trees in the, in the, in the green are the trees that will be... The trees in the, in the, in the green are the trees that will be encroached upon by the grading on the subject property. A portion of, of a tree will be encroached upon by the detached garage workshop in purple, and then you have the ADU that will be have, that will require some encroachments on the trees immediately to the south of it. And for the main residence, you do have the oak tree that will be removed because of the site grading. The relatively small oak tree that will, will require removal is due to site preparation and grading activities. The tree is not a good transplant candidate due to its health and location on the hillside area. If approved for removal, the, the three replacement oak trees will be planted on the subject property. An alternative design would require more grading and would also create more impacts on encroachments into, into oak trees in the subject area. The design that the applicant came up with, which he considered various alternatives, this was the least impactful on the remaining oak trees. Again, if we were to place the, the main residence in other areas that were not previously disturbed, it would require more grading into slopes over twenty-five percent, and it would require perhaps more removal of additional oak trees to the south and to the, to the east of where the main residence is proposed. With regards to the administrative action, the municipal code restricts detached accessory structures to six hundred square feet. However, with an administrative action, you can increase that by fifty percent up to nine hundred square feet in area. The applicant is requesting a eight hundred ninety-seven square foot accessory building. However, staff does support the, the project in, in the increase in size, in that the accessory building accounts for less than one percent of the total lot area, and various detached accessories on buildings are similar in size within the neighborhood and located along Bertha Lane there. Staff further supports the proposed size since it meets the height setback and architectural standards of the municipal code and is also compatible with surrounding properties. With regards to the undergrounding of utilities, typically new, new development requires all utilities on site to be underground. However, this has proven to be quite a challenge for the applicant due to the steep topography and the cost of undergrounding all utilities. The applicant is requesting a waiver in that they would connect from existing poles demonstrated here in red over to a new pole on site just south of the proposed ADU. Those are, the, the utilities in blue would be above ground, and then underground from the new pole to the proposed ADU as demonstrated here in green. Staff supports that undergrounding because, again, it's steep rocky terrain, and it's a cost prohibitive requirement to underground all the utilities on the site. And additionally, the new pole and the utilities will be screened by mature landscaping and existing surrounding development. With regards to the fuel modifications, because the applicant is proposing new structures, the main residence and the detached ADU will require a hundred-foot fuel modification from the structure. It appears that only the detached ADU would, would require off-site weed abatement because just west of the ADU, you have an open space area just north of that Islamic Center. So the applicant would be required to maintain that area and perform the off-site weed abatement. We included conditions of approval that prior to issuance of building permits, the applicant is required to offer easements to the adjoining property to perform such weed abatement. With regards to the architectural design, the proposed main, uh, main residence and also accessory structures are proposing, you know, earth tones, a contemporary design that includes stucco mixed with wood, some stone cladding and roofing, and some ironwood cedar trellis. Here are some photographs demonstrating the proposed architectural design, a, a little bit more modern than what's existing out there, but with the enhanced building materials and the design, this would definitely enhance the community there. The architectural design, the size, mass, scale of the residence is compatible with other homes, and staff is supporting the proposed design before you tonight. Here's the elevation of the main residence. You have ironwood trellis, for example, with horizontal and vertical articulation and some decorative window trim here along, along the east and north elevations. Same thing goes for the west and, and, and south elevations here. With regards to the elevations for the ADU, the ADU will be designed to be architecturally compatible with the main residence. As you can see here, you have the, if you look at the south elevation, I indicated the pitched roof there. This is, this is very important because as the slope is ascending from Borchard Road, we wanted to make, make sure that there's no silhouetting that's going to be impacting the visual aesthetics of the area. So that pitched roof follows the slope behind the proposed ADU as you, as demonstrated here. And also, the proposed ADU won't exceed more than fifteen feet in height, so this has helped reduce any kind of aesthetic impacts within the Newberry Park community. Here's the architectural design of the, of the detached garage workshop. As I previously mentioned, it's going to be designed to be compatible with the main residence and maintain that neighborhood feel. With regards to fire access, the area in, in dash here is the fire department turnaround just immediately south of the proposed main residence, and then you have a fire access path to travel that leads over to the ADU to, towards the, the north, and then also around the main residence there, and then over to the detached garage workshop. The proposed project does also include improvements along Bertha Lane and will include the installation of a new fire hydrant. With regards to the CEQA exemption, the project was analyzed for conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act. It has been determined that the proposed project is categorically exempt. Class three, fifteen three oh three A and E apply. Class three consists of construction and location of limited numbers of new and small structures. In this case, the proposed project includes the construction of one, single-family residence and associated accessory development. The Community Development Department has further determined that none of the six exemptions to the use apply. Staff did receive two phone calls regarding the proposed project. Property owners within three hundred feet of the, of the subject site did contact staff inquiring about scope of the work and also access to the property. Staff did answer all the questions for the concerned residents. We indicated that the applicant would receive access to the property from Kelly Road off of either Borchard Road or Lynn Road, and would access the property through Bertha Lane. So all issues were addressed from those phone calls, and they didn't state any objections to the proposed project. In conclusion, since the location of the proposed residence and accessory buildings and associated site improvements have been designed to minimize impacts to the natural landforms and oak trees, staff determined that the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding area and will result in a desirable project. Therefore, staff does support this proposed project before you tonight. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the PPD nineteen seven zero four two two administrative action nineteen dash seven zero eight two two oak tree permit nineteen dash seven zero four two seven and underground utility waiver nineteen dash seven zero four two five based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval. Staff's available for any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Do you want to go first?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I just got a few questions I want to run by you first. Has anybody else in that development gotten an exemption for underground versus above-ground utilities?
Not that I'm aware of, not for a single-family residence like this, because there really haven't been any custom homes proposed in the area. You primarily get tracks. There was a recent track.
The home above it is a custom home.
Oh, the, the project.
Within, I'm talking about within the neighborhood, within that gated community.
I understand that that project was approved in two thousand and one, and I don't, I'm not aware of there being an underground utility waiver for that project.
So he's above ground too, over there, of the, of the utility poles?
I'd have to verify that, but I do know that there was a track further south, and that involved subdivision of four homes, and those weren't waivers for that.
Okay, so those are underground. We don't know about the one above him. All right. Then I have a question about the weed abatement, because he doesn't, they do have that, that neighbor up above them. They're talking about grading into that slope, and they're talking about weed abatement taking off all the, the growth there. Will that impact that slope? Are they going to suffer from erosion, especially for that ADU over time? Is that going to be an issue?
I can't, I can't verify whether or not the proposed offsite weed abatement will, will impact the slope. I doubt it because I talked to LA County, I'm sorry, Ventura County Fire Department, and they explained to me that they would just require, because there's a lot of oak trees in that slope area, it would just require trimming from, from the branches that hit the ground up. I don't know how that would impact the, the soil and the geology in the area, but the applicant, because they are going to grade the site, we'd have them, we'd have our Building Safety Division take a look at the geotechnical reports associated with the proposed grading, which would be probably more impactful than offsite weed abatement.
And, excuse me, if I could add to that, Commissioner? Typically, weed abatement just removes the top portion of the plant. The root structure stays in place, which is what holds the soil together, so there should not be a significant impact from weed abatement.
Well, I was just thinking that they're going to be regrading that whole thing, so how much is all going to move? Then the other question I had for you is, you said that this home's primarily contemporary style. I didn't see all the homes in the area, but it seems to me it's more of a ranch kind of neighborhood. How many other homes in the neighborhood are contemporary in design?
This would be the first of the style within the neighborhood. We looked at the actual spatial separation between the homes. There's really no continuity between the homes that actually established an architectural theme, so this was an opportunity for us to allow this kind of design within the area without affecting the, the established pattern.
My personal taste, I love contemporary, that's fine. The other thing, I, I didn't, in our report, see the size and scale of the neighboring properties. This is, I assume, within the scope of, of everything else that's around them, right?
I actually have, I prepared a slide for that.
I knew you had one.
Yeah, the, the proposed main residence, it is within the average size of neighboring properties. As I have a, demonstrate here, the average size is three thousand six hundred and sixty-one square feet in area. You have homes that are five thousand two hundred and ten square feet, three thousand eight hundred and forty-one, three thousand three hundred and sixty-eight, and three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight, et cetera. And these actually home sizes, I got them from the Ventura County assessors, and I didn't include the actual garage, so it would actually be larger.
No, this is perfect. I love this slide. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cohen, do you have any questions?
Yes, I just had a question regarding staging during construction. Would it be all onsite staging for construction?
Yes, the applicant did provide a preliminary staging and construction plan for the proposed project, and I understand it'll be phasing, and the applicant would be staging their, their equipment within the front yard area of the property as they construct the main residence, and then they would construct the ADU and then finally get the detached garage workshop done. And the applicant can speak more about what their construction and management plan would be.
Great, thank you.
Okay. One more, Commissioner?
Yeah, one more question. It wasn't clear to me. I, I tried to go out there on Friday, and I couldn't get under the property, but I got out there this morning, and I only had my phone on me, so, and I can't see that well. So I was just curious, the boundaries of that property, as I was originally looking at it, does that also cover those horse corrals that are at the bottom currently?
Oh, actually, I have, I have a slide here that would address that.
You have an updated picture of that, yeah.
So the, I think the actual fire, the fire slide, I just want to show you something here. The fire slide here shows the, if I can get the pointer, along the, the southwestern portion of the property we were talking about, right?
Yeah.
So Bertha Lane is a private road, and the, and the applicant has legal access from Bing's Road to Bertha Lane, and then the, the, the horse stables that are existing out there wouldn't be impacted because the applicant's intent is to construct that access within the approved easement, which is outside of where the stables are.
It's outside of that first corral there. Yeah, I saw there's, there's almost like a fire road there already.
It appears, it appears so, so there's like an access road already there, and again, the applicant has an access easement to enter the property just adjacent to those.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if that was part of their property too, so that's a separate property on that side.
Separate property, yeah, that's the property to the south.
That's, that's what I thought originally, I just wanted to make sure I had it right in my head.
Okay, I think you've answered my questions. At this point, we'll ask for the applicant and the applicant's representative to speak. You will have fifteen minutes, and as you speak, would you state your name and city residence for the record?
Hello, my name is Jeff Jacobson, and I'm a resident of the city of Newberry Park. And I wrote something down for you, I'm going to share with you now. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Jeff, and my wife, here in the yellow sweater, is Robin Jacobson. We're longtime residents of Newberry Park. Thank you for your time today. I'd like to start by thanking the Planning Department in particular, Carlos, as well as Steve. They've really guided us through this process. It's, you know, a new process for us, and they've helped us prepare for what we brought to you today, so we're great, very grateful, thank you. Robin and I both grew up in Newberry Park. We attended local schools and churches over the years and have multiple connections to the city, with many family members still living nearby. Our family's story started when Robin and I were only acquaintances in first and second grade here in Newberry Park, and we went off to college, happened to be at the same place, and fell in love. We were relocated to Los Angeles for our first jobs, had our three beautiful children, Luke Henry and Bridgette, and purchased our first house. We dabbled in our first big construction project in LA, taking that house down to the studs and rebuilding, and sold it and moved back to where we consider our home, which is here, Newberry Park, where we are planting our roots deeply. Our children are enrolled in local schools and thriving. We enjoy so many of the fruits of this area, including hiking, the views, proximity to the beach, and the community that makes this a town we all know and love. The story of what brought us home is anchored in this property, really, once we set eyes on the lot, we knew it's where we wanted to build our forever house. The seventeen oak trees that so beautifully parade themselves around, the natural rock formations that sit on top of the nole, the natural landscape of grass and native plants and shrubs. There's, this property is so unique in that it has so many different elements. It's got valleys and noles and what we call the saddle where we want to place the house, and down below, behind the apartments, it's like a forest with these unending canopies of some of the beautiful, most beautiful oak trees actually down behind those apartments. Anyways, all these things were so blessed to have and hold sacred forever. Our dream is to impact the site as little as possible and preserve this sanctuary that is the property that has evolved to be over the years. Our main residence is situated on the largest existing pad of the, really of the property between the two large noles, yet still has great views, but it's very private, so it's set back and really only, only will be able to be seen by one resident in the whole valley, which is the neighbor behind us, that, in the big Tudor house, that can see everybody because he's so high. The next structure we planned was for the garage with, within our other pre-existing flat pad by the entrance of the property. And as you likely know, children and a large family have a lot of stuff, so it affords us the extra space that we needed for our projects, but also allows us to keep the size of the main residence, you know, compact, also single-story and low-profile, so we're impacting, feel like we're impacting the site as little as possible that way. And then finally, with aging parents and even grandparents living in very close proximity, we felt it made sense for this third pad that's already, you know, been sort of on the property. It's flat, would be perfect for the ADU, so we have a place for them someday. And guess, it's small, modest, single-story, again, with a newly pitched roof we added to try, you know, to blend with the hillside. Our desire to have a contemporary mid-century home has always been the forefront of our minds when designing this space, mainly for its low-profile and minimalistic stature that we feel not only embodies us as a family, but also the roots of the site. We're delighted to take on the challenge of bringing all the existing landscape into full health, as it's been many years of drought, and our oak trees need us. Robin is very passionate about preserving the native landscape. With our previous residence smack dab in the middle of LA, near Dodger Stadium, we created a sanctuary of, a landscape that will forever be known by the neighborhood for the amount of butterflies and bees and wildlife that it attracted. So she has, you know, real green thumb. She's also already been in contact with an arborist on how we can best address bringing our oak trees back to their full health as soon as, as we can, and really, which really means getting water on site. All new plantings on the site will be carefully selected to further complement what is already present on the site. You know, Robin has walked the site with our landscape designer to begin identifying the existing plants, and we've taken inventory so we know what best survives in that soil and can expand the natural landscape even more. If, if you haven't gathered by now, we are enthralled by this property. We're, we're careful and calculated about every step we've taken to date. We want to be in harmony with both our neighbors, the community, and the city of Thousand Oaks. Our soon-to-be neighbors have been sincerely welcoming us. I don't know if you guys got copies of the letters, but we had letters from four different, our four most immediate neighbors just expressing their support, and they continue to reach out to us asking how they can help us, which is. And they continue to reach out to us, asking how they can help us, which seems, which is blown away by them. We recognize this unique opportunity and feel a strong responsibility to do right by this, you know, 3.7-acre piece of property in this beautiful city of Thousand Oaks, and we feel that our proposal really does that. We have reviewed and agreed with the conditions proposed by the planning department, and with that, we thank you and ask for your support and approval. If we can answer any questions, we would be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner? Commissioner? No, I have none either. And we do not have any speaker cards?
I actually do have a quick question for the applicant, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, thank you for the great commentary and your passion for the city and beautifying this area. Regarding utilities, what is the approximate cost? I know you have to do a lot of fire improvement with the hydrant, bring water. What is the approximate cost to bring the utilities to this area?
We know that approximately for the, it just, we don't, actually, honestly, I don't know all the exact costs for doing all of the different utilities. We have an idea. We know that we're probably looking somewhere in the range of $150,000 to $200,000 in utilities because we have to bring water. We've been knocking things off the list. Originally, we were going to bring gas, but now we're thinking probably not doing gas, just going all-electric or potentially propane, because the costs are, they're, it's a challenge. And we're, you know, a young family, just starting, you know, still have college to think about, so we're on a tight budget. But, yeah, we, I think somewhere in that range, yeah.
And the electrical pole that will be installed on the property, is that in, in coordination with Edison and bringing that line there to have access?
Yeah, so I've been working with Manny at Edison, and that's, the route that they proposed really seems to be the best. It's that pole, by placing a pole on that part of the property that shows on the exhibit, it's, for one, it's, it's hidden by the apartments from Orchard and any surrounding neighbors. Two, it skirts kind of right around an oak tree that we would potentially have to dig around. And, and yeah, and then from there, we would go underground to the, to the residence. So, you know, it'd just be a very short portion where, where that would be extending it above ground.
Great. Well, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Okay, where are we? Do not have any public comments? One more time? And does staff have any follow-up comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay. At this time, normally, we would call you back up for a rebuttal if anybody had said anything that you wanted to talk about. Do you have any other comments? Okay. And any more questions for staff? Comments, questions? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing, and I will open up the floor for a motion or discussion. Somebody's got to do it.
I'll, I'll start. I, I went out, looked at the property this morning. I think it's a beautiful property. I think you guys are going to have a wonderful home there. I'm, I'm actually really impressed with this design. I think I mentioned earlier, I'm a big fan of mid-century. My house is designed in mid-century and decorated that way. So I'm, I'm a big fan of this project. I think that they've done everything they can to, to, to preserve the, the aspect of the lot itself and, and preserve the natural existence. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the price, precise plan of design, PPD 2019-70422, Administrative Action AA 2019-70822, Oak Tree Permit OTP 2019-70427, and Underground Utility Waiver UUW 2019-70425, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in this resolution.
Thank you. Do you have any comments, Commissioner?
Yes, Jeffrey, Robyn, thank you for your time and taking the time to produce this nice design and taking into consideration the oak trees and preserving what you can there. I am supportive of, of this project and second.
My only comment is it's really nice to see a project where all the neighbors are in favor of it. Read your letters, that's pretty, pretty cool. At this point, I think, will the secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Motion carries 3-0.
Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the community development department within 10 days. Thank you for coming. All right. At this point, I think we're ready for item number eight. Are there any department reports?
There are none this evening, Chair.
Thank you. Item number nine, now is the time for commission comments and/or any AB 1234 reports. Do we have any comments from my fellow commissioners? No. Item number 10, Mr. Parker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, and upcoming issues?
No follow-up items or announcements, however, just want to state that the next regular meeting of the planning commission will be held on November 18th. There's currently an item scheduled and potentially one more.
Thank you. At this point, I think we can adjourn. Thank you all. The meeting is now adjourned to the next meeting, November 18th, 2019, at 6:00 PM.